Okay, good morning. I'm going to call the Washington County Council meeting for fifteen twenty twenty five order. Uh, this wood on stain of the pledge is laid by the county commander of Washington County Commissioners call meeting.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was kind and grateful to Father Heaven. We're mindful of your awesomeness. We're mindful of your greatness. We pray, Father, this morning that you can clear our minds of other matters and give us a clear understanding of what needs to be done this morning. We're thankful for those, all the souls that are represented here this morning, we pray that you will give us the courage to say and do those things which are right and proper. We realize, Father, every good and perfect gift comes from thee. We're thankful as we look about us, the blue skies, the green grass, and all those things that you have blessed us with. As we enter this meeting, give us a mindset that will show positive aspects, that will give us a reason to come up with the right answers. There are many here this morning who have chosen to protect us and serve us. And, Father, we just thank thee for that. We ask that you please keep them safe as they go about their duties. Be with us as council people that we can do that which is right, in Jesus' name, amen.
All right, good morning once again, as we follow down, or again, they're here this morning. First off, a couple of comments. Looks like we did have a couple of people sign up, so Max Green want to come forward?
Morning. I'm Max Green, living in Campbellburg. What I've come to ask the council to do is to consider not funding boards that are not a hundred percent state law compliant. We've got new laws on live streaming as well as the new requirements for the postings that have to be made. But also, the big part is that I'm referring mostly to the zoning board. The zoning board for the last nine years, they had non-legal membership. They had members who did not own property or had jurisdiction of the board, and according to state law. They had too many Republicans. The county claimed that the Republican was actually Democrat because the state law required no more than three of the same political party. I complained to the last attorney and sat in her office for an hour explaining to her what the state code say on the or discussing with her what the state code say on do can and cannot turn on any boards. And that you had membership that did not meet the requirements. And state law requires that the board members herself have to make a determination. They shall, not may, they shall determine whether they live within a jurisdiction or not. That wouldn't happen. Nothing came along with that. And also, even after the discussions, then she decided to double down and put a city commissioner on the BDA. Appointed the city commissioner of BDA, which the law specifically says you cannot hold elected positions and be on the BDA at the same time. Also, that made three members on the BDA that was serving on the zoning board, which is another state law violation. It's just time after time that there's no respect to the public that these laws are being violated. But then, this is a board that actually, it has the authority to become a tax collector if a certain situation would come about. This board has a lot of power and had a lot of effect on people's lives. And if they can't follow even the bare minimum state law, then they shouldn't continue to get funding. And they shouldn't have the authority that they have. But I'm asking for all the boards, you have a county calendar, they have the ability, and each board to post on that calendar and have it where the public can actually tell when there's an update or a meeting change. The zoning boards had to cancel meetings because they didn't post properly back in the spring. They were going to have a meeting in the Justice Center, but they didn't post it on the door like they had to. So they canceled the meeting then. They just had to cancel this last meeting that was scheduled for this month. Because postings are required, and the county calendar still said that the meeting was for the first Tuesday, which they then moved to another one. There's no reason the calendar can't be updated by these individual boards to maintain clarity and ability for the public to see what's that and be able to follow these state codes, which require where they publish their archives, meetings before, and the required stuff that goes with it. I had prepared different, but that's what I got to say. And if you have any questions, I do have the state codes here. I have a, where the attorney had given me the proof that who she said was on the board. She also made a comment down there, in some cases, they gotta have four out of five people be Republicans, even though that's not what the state law allows for. It is. I'm just asking for compliance or the, I went to the Commissioners in twenty twenty two. I went to the zoning board two times in twenty twenty two. I resigned from the BDA because it wouldn't become state law compliant. I'm just asking now for the council with the power of the purse to pull back on the purse agreement to say you will become state law compliant or else. The last thing is they're required to post their citizen members when they were appointed to the board and when the board term expires. State law says there are staggered terms. It can only be, they have to be one for one year, one for two, one for three, one for four, and after that four-year terms, it should be staggered. What she put, that she's required to put on her notices, said they all four expire the same year, they all four were put on the same year. It's not, it's not state law compliant. I'm just asking for full compliance or say we're going to pull back the money next year. That money can be better used for raises for other departments that actually aren't even compliant with state law. Thank you. Any questions?
I got any questions for Max?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you much.
We just had time here to go through our budget request for twenty twenty six, and there's a lot of things to go over for you guys to think about. You all have very difficult jobs trying to reach good compromise for the taxpayers of the county, what they're paying for. And then, also by being fair to your county employees. I know that there was some discussion regarding our overtime at the Sheriff's Department during the budget hearings. I've said it before and I'll say again that that has always been one of my toughest line items in my budget to try to figure out what I need to ask for for the next year. And part of the problem with that is, is in that particular line item that everybody refers to as overtime, is there are other things that come out of that line item, such as holiday pay, downtime, and vacation time comes out of there. So, we've asked that that be separated out. I don't know if that's going to be done for next year. I'm hoping that we also, moving forward, will make it easier to know where we truly stand with overtime. I know overtime is a major problem for a couple of different departments. It has been for mine. And recently, I was able to get Michelle, Michelle and Cheryl to sit down with me and try to come up with a report, which I sent to you guys. I emailed to you over the weekend. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that report or not, break some of those numbers down. I think when you break them down, the overtime is still somewhat alarming. Maybe to you, maybe not so much to me as a department head at the Sheriff's Department. Again, being there for thirty-six years almost and seeing a lot of things that have come and went over the years. There's a lot of stuff that I understand about the Sheriff's Department that maybe county council members don't understand about how the department operates. And I'm giving you a standing invitation, an open invitation, to come and visit the Sheriff's Department at any point in time to sit down, see how we operate, see what we do, talk to our employees, and see what we really do on a daily basis there. A couple of you have came and visited the Sheriff's Department, asked a lot of questions and things, and I appreciate that. Some people have never stepped foot in my Sheriff's Department. I find it hard to, for you all to make good, to sit down decisions about my budget without ever having stepped in my department to understand where we come from. I did a couple of Google searches here recently, such as, can you operate a Sheriff's Department without overtime? The answer was no. A Sheriff's Department generally cannot eliminate all overtime because of staffing levels, unavoidable events, and the need to provide coverage. But they can and should control and manage it through efficient scheduling, clear policies, and evaluating staffing needs to minimize its use and impact on officers. The Fairness Act requires overtime paid for non-exempt law enforcement employees for hours worked beyond the standard work period. Overtime for police agencies is caused by both unforeseen events and scheduled activities, often driven by chronic staffing shortages, being the key point. A major factor that is frequently cheaper for departments to pay overtime than to hire, train, and provide benefits for new full-time officers. Factors necessitating overtime: low staffing and vacancies. Many agencies, including ours, is understaffed, meaning fewer deputies are available to cover shifts. This forces existing deputies to work longer hours. High staff turnover, vacancies, and callouts can reduce available deputies, also requiring overtime to cover shifts. Vacations and sick leave. Time off for vacations, sick leave, or injury requires other deputies to backfill shifts, which can create overtime situations. We used to, at one time, buy those vacation days back from the officers at the end of the year. They stopped doing that. I don't think any, you can ask any county employee who has earned time off to lose that time at the end of the year. They didn't take it. Therefore, it is a priority for us to make sure that our deputies are getting their time off. And if we don't have the coverage, that officer would be able to take his earned time off, then we have to have people come out and work that shift, therefore creating overtime for the department. But otherwise, we would get off paying just straight time if we just bought those hours back from people versus having to hire somebody else.
Do you think it would help to buy those hours back and switch policy back to that? There was discussion about that from Karen at the last meeting, and so I wanted to ask you.
I think that it would help. Would it be a major help to that line item? I don't know. But I do think that it would help. Most officers, I think you will find, would love to have their time off. It just depends. There were a few people who would catch that vacation time in, but most people, especially when you're working all this overtime anyway, you gotta have some time off, you know? It's good for your mental health to take time off and things. And I do think that if we went back to buying those back from the staff, I think that that would help, yes. Any other questions about that? Recruitment retention issues. Low recruitment rates, deputy burnout, and heavy workloads. And retirement of experienced deputies contribute to sustained shortages. Mandatory training requirements. Mandatory training and requalification courses often take place during deputies' off-duty time. Deputies are compensated with overtime for mandatory training that is scheduled during their time off. I've got my trainer that's responsible for the department training sitting out here in the audience. I think he can tell you, as well as most of the guys on the department, like my fire instructor sitting out here. We really do try to schedule our mandatory training when the officers are on a scheduled shift, so that we're not paying overtime for training. But when you're short-staffed, it makes it very difficult to be able to do that. So then, to in order to get those required hours of training for your deputies, you're scheduling training time on their day off so that they can get those required hours. Old over and shifts extensions. When a major incident occurs near the end of a shift, deputies are required to stay on the job until the situation is resolved. This often involves lengthy investigations, witness statements, and report writing. Unlike a lot of other county jobs, at the end of your shift, you can't just clock out here and go home if you're on a bad accident or you're investigating a domestic, or, you know, even something more serious than that, you know, a shooting or something. You can't just punch the clock and go home. You have to stay. And a lot of times, these officers are required to do reports of things that have to be turned in in a timely manner. So that requires them to stay over and do these reports as well. But a lot of times, we can't predict when people are going to call in with a situation. A lot of times, these calls will come in right at the end of an officer's shift, when that's all you have to take the call. We're going to have to go take that and put them in overtime. Court appearances. Duties are often required to appear in court on their off-duty time to testify in cases they are involved in. This is another source for greater overtime. Emergency disasters and security or special events can also cause deputies to work overtime. Emergencies and events such as public events declared state of emergencies can necessitate around the clock from every officer requiring extended hours. Another question that I asked Google here recently is, can you operate a county detention center without overtime? The answer was, it is virtually impossible for a county detention center to operate with any overtime, without any overtime, sorry. Due to the legal and operational requirements of running a twenty-four-seven facility, corrections departments rely on mandatory overtime to address chronic staffing shortages. Once again, staffing shortages comes up, unpredictable emergencies, and other scheduling challenges. Twenty-four-seven supervision. Jails must maintain uninterrupted supervision of inmates every day of the year, including nights, weekends, and holidays. If a scheduled officer is absent, another officer must cover the shift to maintain safety and meet required staffing ratios. Staffing minimums. State and federal regulations like the Prison and Rule of Elimination Act, minimum staff-to-inmate ratio, overtime is used to meet these minimums during emergencies or when normal staff levels fall short. Unpredictable events, emergencies such as inmate disturbances, fights, medical crisis, and hospitalizations of inmates can require immediate increase in staff beyond the standard shift, causing overtime. Also, in there is transports, as we've talked before, you know? We never know when a juvenile is going to get picked up and sent to juvenile correction facility that is going to require someone to make that transport. And if it causes our jail staff to fall below the standard, then we have to call somebody in for overtime. And that happens quite regularly as well as emergency detention orders, you know? When those are signed and you can't predict when somebody's going to need to be committed to a mental facility that requires someone to make that transport, which often causes our numbers to fall below the standard staffing level. Chronic shortages. The corrections field struggles with high turnover and difficulty recruiting new officers, a problem that has worsened in recent years. Resulting understaffing makes mandatory overtime a permanent feature of the job rather than a temporary fix. Burnout fatigue. Heavy reliance on forced overtime leads to officer fatigue and burnout, which in turn increases absenteeism and makes it even harder to retain employees. This creates a vicious cycle that further fuels the need for overtime. And the last Google search that I did is, can you operate a police dispatch center without overtime? And the reply back was, it is generally not possible to operate a police dispatch center without using overtime, especially for a sustained period due to the chronic staffing and the twenty-four-seven nature of emergency services. Almost all public safety answering points rely on overtime to maintain adequate coverage. The primary factors driving this reliance on overtime are high turnover, which we've had, we've had that at the Sheriff's Department, currently going through with that. Difficulties with recruitment and long training process pre persistent staffing shortages. Many agencies with poor staffing levels dwell below their targets. Another twenty-four-seven operational demand. Dispatch centers must be staffed around the clock every day of the year, including holidays. This coverage is essential to answer nine-one-one calls, handle radio traffic, and coordinate emergency responders at all times. There's increased stress and burnout to dispatchers who are already stripped thin and face even heavier workloads. This intense pressure often leads to burnout, job satisfaction, and mental health challenges. I also asked Cheryl to run another report for me for twenty twenty-five, or not, I'm sorry. For the last four years at the Sheriff's Department, to see how many employees have went through the Sheriff's Department in the last four years. And that number is rather alarming to me. I'm sure it will be to you. It's been eighty-plus people have went through the Sheriff's Department in the last four years. Now, not all of those people left for other jobs. There were several people that retired in there. We had an employee that passed away. But when you break that down, there was nine deputies that have left in the last four years. Two of those resigned. Four of those police officers went to jobs in other police agencies in surrounding counties. And three of those deputies left to go into the private sector. Out of those numbers, there were eighteen dispatchers that went through the dispatch center in the last four years, and fifty-one jailers had turned over in the jail. And I think, as I told you during our recent budget hearing, the average years of service for my jailers is point nine four five years of service. That's less than one year of service for those jailers. There are twenty in total in the jail. If you take the jail commander out, the jail lieutenant, supervisors, that'd be eighteen people with less than a year of service. You can imagine, or only imagine, the liability that that puts on the county by having all the inexperience back there in the jail. Therefore, as part of the review, too, I did that salary study, find out where our jailers fall in the surrounding counties. And I asked for a considerable increase in their salary over the other employees to try to keep those people in the jail to help reduce our liability there in the jail. And again, that report that I emailed you over the weekend was a report that Cheryl helped me generate. And that was just for the year twenty twenty-five. It was for all the employees that went through the Sheriff's Department. I broke that down. Out of that hundred and six thousand dollars that was actually spent on overtime for the Sheriff's Department this year, dispatch is responsible for twenty-four thousand four fifty-two seventy-seven of that overtime that was spent so far this year. The deputies are responsible for thirty thousand three forty-four point twenty-two. And the jail staff is approximately fifty-one thousand two nine one eighty-eight. So the jail staff is obviously taking a bigger piece of the pie there on that overtime. Again, every time somebody leaves back there in the jail, we have to train other people. It creates issues for us back there in the jail. Part of that overtime for the officers this year, again, is because, you know, there was a time where we actually reached a full staff there at the Sheriff's Department, on our deputies, but it goes up and down. And we are currently about six deputies short on the Sheriff's Department in actual officers, not in positions. We've got two officers that are at the academy right now. They're in week number nine today of eighteen weeks. We don't have them while they're gone. We've got two new deputies that we hired up there that have not been to the academy. So therefore, they're there, but you can't really count them as an officer, because you can't send them out on details by themselves until after they've been properly trained. And then we're apparently trying to fill two positions as we speak at the Sheriff's Department. So, again, trying to break down that line item to determine what we really are truly paying in overtime, I think would be best if we get that separated out so that we could get better ideas, better handling. Again, I don't know. I'll be the first to say that if somebody has a better solution, I'm all ears as to how we can fix some of these things. Clearly, there's a retention issue there. Some people might say it's a management issue, and it might be partially. But I'll say this, I do go to the Sheriff's conferences. I talk to other sheriffs. I talk to them almost weekly around here. And I can tell you that it's not just a problem for Washington County. It's a problem for the entire state of Indiana. There is an officer shortage. There's a shortage of people wanting to work in the jail and work in the dispatch center. I think that we're going to have to do more things to try to retain these people. I don't know about the other county departments. I'm not going to speak for them. I don't know what the turnover rate is. But again, since our last budget hearing, I had a jailer that, an inmate spit in his face, spit got in his eye, and he had to go to the hospital for that. I had another jailer that, and that resulted in an additional battery charge, the inmate, by the way. Had another jailer since then that has had urine thrown on them, which again, created another battery charge for the inmate. And then I've also had another corrections officer that got bit by an inmate since our budget hearing that broke the skin and required a trip to the hospital and testing and medication for that employee. Again, the things that the jail staff goes through is stuff that very few other county employees go through, with the exception of the officers and maybe the people at the county's department. And for that reason, I feel like we need to do more to try to retain our corrections officers and ultimately reduce our liabilities back in the jail. Do I have any questions for me? I don't have any questions, but I just appreciate everything you guys did. I know it's a very tough job, and you got a tough job to sit down and try to decide what's best for the county and and try to do the right thing. Thank you. Appreciate it. And again, moving forward, my door is always open tomorrow or next week. If you have a question, feel free to come visit the department or sit down and ask questions. Thank you.
All right, we're going to head here to our agenda. We've all had the opening minutes from August fourth, August nineteenth, and twentieth through the twenty-second for the budget hearing. I just need a motion to approve those nine minutes. Motion by Andrew Sack, by Preston, all those who favor it, I can. All right, next up on the agenda, Chief Public Defender, Ryan Bauer.
Hey, guys. Thank you for having me. I'm sorry, that budget hearing last time, I missed. I was sick. Nobody wanted me here. But today, as most of you know, I have an open position. I brought a handout. I have an open position in my paralegal, or paralegal position. And I've had an opportunity since the last budget hearing. There's been some interest in that position by somebody who's got significant court experience, over fifteen years of court experience. Prior to that, she was a legal secretary. So it's somebody that, you know, could jump right into the office, gets ground running, and knows everything about the system, not just in on the court side, but our side, and everybody in the system. So what I'm asking for, above what the council has already approved for us, and we appreciate that, that was fair, but with this new experienced person, I'm asking for a difference of about five thousand three hundred ninety dollars. So that would make the two positions, my paralegal two and three, the same. And it brings up the paralegal, the office manager of, just a hair. And it's important. It's important for us because, as you know, Sandy has been with the county. She's my office manager paralegal. She's been with the county thirty-four years. And, you know, she could retire, I think she turned sixty-five in four months. She could retire any minute. So I need people that are experienced and have that experience to transfer. I think Sandy's going to stay with us a year or two, and I hope that she does. I hope she stays with us ten years. She offered me about seven years. I made her promise for ten when I came. I made her a promise for 10 when I came, but I don't think she wants to go to the full amount. So that's all I'm asking for is $5,390 going forward with the budget. I brought my budget down in '24 and '25. We brought the offer down. We're doing appeals now, so we save a significant amount there. For '25, we're under budget. We should pay back to the county about $25,000. So what I'm asking for in short, I guess, is to allow me to go ahead and see if I can get some interest at the $43,000 level from this experienced former county employee and go ahead and pay that out through 2025 and then amend the salary ordinance for those two positions for 2026. That's my request. Are there any questions or anything that I can add?
Do I have any questions for Ryan on that? So basically, you're just trying to level out those deputy positions?
Yeah, we had, when I first came on, we had changed those because that position, the fourth, sorry, the third position became more of an assistant, more of a receptionist position. And now we're going to expand that, have somebody who's doing the appellate work. And if we can, I'm not going to pay somebody who doesn't have 15 years court experience $43,000 for that position. But if we can do that, then that's somebody who could transition after Sandy was training, you know, a year or two. So I'll pay my long-term. Hope is, you know, we go one or two years with these three positions. And then I get permission from the state, from Indianapolis, to allow us to work with two positions. So we'll have two people with significant experience, and then we'll just go with that. So I'm hoping, you know, if I'm willing, we can get that approval that years, you know, '24, '25, we're working with two people so we can actually lower the budget in the future. Right now, we have to have three to meet our requirements for reimbursement. As you all know, if we meet certain requirements, if we're in compliance, and we are currently, once we hire this next position, we'll be in compliance. We get 40% back. So on my budget, you only spend 60%. So out of the county, my amended request is only $480,741 to the county. Everything else is reimbursed. That 40% gets reimbursed from the state as long as we maintain compliance. I need three paralegals right now to maintain compliance. I think in a few years, I'm certainly trying to get the state to approve just two paralegals. So I think we can, I think we can make it on that. And I think that would be a savings to the county here in a few years' future. But we wouldn't make that change, of course, until we get some retirement, something like that, yeah, in a few years. That's my hope.
Do you have any other questions for Ryan on that?
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Next up here on our agenda, we have additional appropriation for the Highway Department, $150,000. Rick, do you want to comment on that or answer any questions?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. This is, I would like to clarify, this is not extra money. This is money we have set aside for previous years. This will mainly be, we had a change order on a bridge that's $50,000. That was unexpected. And also, last winter was a little harsher than usual. So we went through quite a bit of material before the first of the year there. And that'll get us in good shape. We've had salt delivered, six loads already. That's $15,000 right off the bat. This will just put us in good shape going into the winter.
Do I get any questions for Rick on additional appropriations?
Andy.
It's already in there. Need to go on that. So at this time, I will take an entertaining motion to approve the additional preparation for Highway Department, $150,000. Motion of Captain Brad, second by Andrew, all is in favor of Ryan. Additional preparation approved. Next up, additional preparation. This is the first reading for the Riverboat Fund, $74,805.77. Any comments on that?
Yeah, as I spoke to you earlier this year, the Adult Protective Services Fund, we knew we were going to be in the negative with it once it finally closed out at the end of June. That is the final figure that will bring that fund positive again.
Yeah, this is not something new, so it's just something where to bring that back in, and we have to appropriate that much more than you get back where it needs to be. So that's the first reading on that. We'll have a vote on that in the October meetings. First reading on that. Just wanted to make everybody aware of it so you know about it. Any questions for Cheryl? If there is none, then we'll move forward. All right, at this time, I want to close the council meeting. We're going to open a public hearing for the Brown Vernon Fire District. That's the first one on our list this morning, which basically, if we look here, special fire for Brown Vernon, budget estimate of $200,000, maximum levy $144,541. Current tax levy is $138,942. So levy percentage would be a 4% base code there on the Brown Vernon Fire District. So that's their notice. Any public comments on Brown Vernon Fire District? There is none. Close down. Motion to close this public hearing on Brown Vernon. Motion by Councilman Fleming, second by Councilman Davidson, all those in favor, right hand. Brown Vernon Fire District Public Hearing is closed. October 6th. All right. Next up, Blue River Fire District, public hearings. Public hearing. Just real quickly, I'll run theirs down. Budget estimate, randy date, $20,000. Special fire general, $108,500. Special Q fire, $20,000 total, $148,500. Maximum levy, $77,266. Current tax levy, $75,38. There being a levy percentage a little over 4% on Blue River Fire District. Any comment public on Blue River Fire District? If there is none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Armstrong, second. Mr. Fleming, all those in favor, right hand. Close down on Blue River Fire. Next up, Washington County Solid Waste Management District. Over there, 2026. Public hearing. Real quickly, I'll reduce down as well. For the solid waste management, budget estimate, $1.7. Maximum estimated funds, $1.159. Current tax levy, $1.1114. So there again, about a 4%. And that is on the Washington County Solid Waste Management. Any public comment on theirs?
Yes.
Yep.
We're going to bring that down to instead of the 4%, this would be 3.2 across the board because we've got nine employees. Estimated lifetime of the, out there now is through 2045. And we're about 200, that makes us about 200 under the budget for 2026 versus last year.
He is reading the things that were advertised. This isn't the adoption.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So no public comment on the Washington County Solid Waste Management? If not, we need a motion there to approve theirs. Motion by Brad, second by Gerald, all those in favor, right hand. Have to close this one. Next one, the Langley Creek Conservancy District Public Hearing will organize. Real quickly, basically, general $25,909. Q, channel maintenance, $21,000 total of $46,909. Estimated funds to be raised, $45,919. Current tax levy, $45,028. So best about 5% in there in general. So any public comment on the Langley Creek Conservancy? If there is none, then I'll entertain a motion. So by Mr. Fleming, second by Mr. Cheryl, all those in favor, right hand. Budget, public hearing closed for the Langley Creek Conservancy. And the next one, Washington County, 2026 budget public hearing. Now on the show. Any public comment on the budget public hearing for the county 2026?
That includes department heads, I assume?
Item number six.
Yeah, that would be on the six. Our agenda. This is the public. If there is no comment, then we need a motion. Motion by Mr. Davidson, second by Mr. Armstrong, all those in favor, right hand. Item number five on the agenda, reports of department heads, elected officials. Any department heads, any comments to explain? Is there any there? Well, listen, your next one is, do you have any? We'll move on to item number six, 2026 budget discussion.
Mr. Lloyd, would you let me talk about this overtime a little bit?
Mike here is handing out a packet we all can look at. Don't expect you to read it all today because sign factors involved, but it's got a lot of information in it as far as stuff that is very helpful as far as trying to break down our overtime stuff. We're very, us and Sheriff's Department are very similar. Difference is between us is we work 24-hour shifts. We've got a breakdown in that packet of like three different options of what you could look at. So your right hand is sweeping in the bag. Basically, on the, the one budget, when we had proposed in the budget hearings about additional employee with a floater, we had taken that out of that. We had taken that out of the option. Therefore, you're going to be looking at $92,000, $93,000 difference less in that budget. Reason why we done that was because of the fact that it was, the ideas was going around that that was going to solve a lot of our overtime issues. That's simply not the case. That floater position was designed, we were looking at it to fill the holes in our schedule. We need that. We need the, you know, when we have a call-in, a sick day, a vacation day, any of that nature. Reason why we want a floater, where we would be able to have somebody that we could, a full-time position where they could come in and work that, work that supply, work through that. As far as overtime reduction with one floater wasn't going to happen. It's just, it just can't cause the schedule to work. So therefore, on our budget, on the revised budget, no floater, and our current staff that we have with a 4% raise that we have to ask for, you're looking, you're looking at 1.8, 1.89 and some change, which is an increase in the budget of $82,000 and some change from last year. And that's basically with our raise, which they all deserve that. Actually, my standpoint, they deserve a lot more than that. But anyway, we're looking at, we had to increase supply items, we had to increase our medical supplies, and they go up every day. It's about, so all in all, that's about the best we can do on that schedule. If you look through there, we also give you a couple of different other options. We give you some options on a scheduled change, which would be going to like a 24-on, 72-off That would basically give everybody, they could work the shift, they'd be off three straight days. With that, we would have to hire another crew, older crew, four feet total. We'd have to do that. We'd also have to take a real serious look, if we did that, we'd have to take a real serious look at upgrading their hourly rate. Because their current hourly rate, if we go to that 24 to 72-hour schedule, they're going to decimate. I wouldn't have a department left. Basically, because the fact of the matter is that they could go anywhere else and make a lot more money on the hour. And that's the way, that's currently the way it is now. That's why it's so difficult for us to hire people because of the fact that we can't compete. We can't. We checked around. We checked around everywhere. We are comparable to Scott County on hourly rate and Jackson County. That's about it. And like I said, it's just, it's simple, it's just simple a regular day. Looking at second, paying behind the work, Phil, breaks down your hourly rate, employees, what can I actually be making? You ask for 34% raise to get, like Tony said, comparable. Still, it'll be a little bit less on the year-end, but your overhead cost is what's going to be. If you look at your bottom number on your total overall budget, you've got your current crew life insurance, your bike, the long chain, it would all increase by and then four employees. And you'd be looking at a lot higher budget than what we're dealing with right now. You'd be looking at 2.2 million and some change on the one, and then on the last one, we reduce overtime by almost $40,000. If you look at your overtime run out, you reduce overtime by $40,000, but you're also increasing everything else out because we are more employees when you're operating. You also have to look. You also have to look, said, Sheriff's Department, drink kind of hit too as well. On our line item, that, that's exactly what that is as well. That's not only overtime, that's vacation time, that's sick time, that's, that's holiday pay, that's everything in there. So, I mean, I can see, again, I brought this up at the ambulance board meeting on Thursday. Uh, we, we were looking at, looking at the past years, there was a couple of years in there where overtime budget was eight thousand dollars. But I think what that was, and I think Todd explained it to everybody, I think fairly decent, I mean, as far as what we can do. Is a lot of that money coming out of the commissioner, on the commissioner's side of stuff, and that's, and when we came in, we wanted to kind of combine everything out that way. Because that eight thousand dollars, I don't know, I really don't know where that come from, I don't know, I really don't. But it's not, that's not anywhere close, I mean.
I think that's an overtime model there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's nowhere close, and that, that is twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
If you look at that last page, it gives you a breakdown of what you actually budget to wait, that line item actually breaks out, your overtime, your holiday pay, and your vacation sick, broke out, and all three options. Tony's getting there. The thing before that also is your, um, schedule hours, we have thirty-five thousand, forty hours a year we have to schedule. Just because somebody's off, because maybe we down a truck, we have to replace, we have to put somebody in there, so we can't, just down the angles, residents of the county that need us. And then if you look at that, next to last page there, that's an additional, the best we can figure as far as additional things we do over the year. We can't control nine-one-ones, we can't control disasters, uh, we can't control state training, this is just the best thing we can figure, we're trying to add that to our budget. And then be, and then work on beating the budget, so January one, two rest of the year, try to maintain that.
We try to do the same thing, and, I mean, we try to have our in-service hours with every crew. That way they're there already, we don't have to call, we don't have to add mandatory meetings. Uh, I think we only had, I think maybe two mandatory meetings in three years. Uh, we usually try to go to every crew, talk to every crew about things, that way we don't incur stuff. I mean, me and him, I tell you what, man, we're, we're the size we can be, I mean, we are, and, uh, I can't, uh. I can't dwell on that enough. And, uh, you know, when you're talking overtime, you have to figure just that halftime, you can't figure the whole thing. Because, because you're going to be paying out that twenty-four hours anyway, regular time to somebody else. So the overtime thing, you have to figure the halftime. And when you do all that, and, and you can look at it, and, and you can decipher that all out, it kind of, I hopefully, hopefully clears it up a little bit more for you. I mean, that's kind of where we stand.
Last page there was somebody, one of the councilmen mentioned that fire department schedule, we might as well put that in there. Twenty-four, forty-eight mandatory Kelly day off. Also increase the budget at the end, and then we had our two more employees to be able to fill the Kelly days, it's mandatory off, trying to save overtime. Increase the budget, also increase payroll a little bit, but your overall budget is increased because of the cost of having to add two more employees, there's still a couple of these.
The fire department, it's saying, well, they work nine hundred and forty-four hours and nineteen days to run the overtime, and they can only qualify for overtime every four to five months. Not on a regular basis.
They get around that by maybe getting salary. You have really nobody there right now that can really explain the nineteen hours, I've been there for forty-two years as a volunteer. That nineteen day thing, a lot of them have said over the years, if somebody pushes it, it's probably illegal. Uh, because it's federal law now, you have to pay people for overtime, even though they go for forty hours. Our pay periods, I don't know how we can do a nineteen pay period here through Kyler, I hope Kyler can speak to this, I'm hot up on all that. But nobody's really explained this nineteen hour, nineteen day pay period in a two-week pay period with the overtime. I'm not no expert on that, that's something Kyler will have to work out on, the lawyer on that. I'm not too sure about that, I understand what you're saying, but this schedule is exactly what they did. At twenty-four on, forty-eight off, mandatory Kelly day every third week, which takes away overtime, is identifiable what they did. Their line items on their budgets right now, I can tell you right now, they are over on their overtime, they're over on their call in, they're over on their volunteers. Uh, and I don't know where the rest of that's money, they're, they're two-thirds of the way in, they're over budget on those three line items. So a lot of my work, but they got the same issues that Brent's got, that we got, shorthanded staff, they got these people coming in, people rolling over. They got the same issues we got, so I'm not going to sit here and slam, but they're doing the best they can do too, because we can't predict nine-one-one runs happening. But all I know is that nineteen day, I don't know how you can legally do that, that's a Kyler and a lawyer question, I don't know what the laws are on it. Nobody up there can really explain it real well, uh, trying to hold Mike Pettit over the weekend. Uh, Mike, I've talked about a couple of them, Mike was probably the best one to explain how that actually worked, he was a table patcher, I think table patcher played it.
He did.
So. I cannot answer the nineteen day thing. I don't see how that figured out how it worked unless you do go to a salary, but then our salary would have to be close to what we're saving or we wouldn't have people. That's just the way it is.
If you look at options like putting drivers instead of U M Ts, you can go V L S with the D M T and the drivers.
Most of our runs are A L S runs, uh, paramedics cannot have a driver, paramedics have to have a U T.
So out of those twenty-nine hundred calls a year, you're seeing the majority of our A L S?
Yes, every month, every month when we do our board meetings with the ambulance, every single month. Our A L S runs are somewhere around that sixty percent range, the V L S runs are somewhere around thirty-five percent. And we have, and we basically, and that brings us in more, that brings us in more money from the, from the billing company. Does the A L S rate, because it's, uh, at the board, at the board meeting on Thursday. I was looking at some things, we can, basically, we can raise our rates for commercial insurance. Uh, you can, you're, you're allowed a maximum of four hundred percent above Medicare or Medicaid rates. Currently, we're like at two hundred and fifty percent. We raise that another hundred and fifty percent, we can bring in, we, we can bring in more money. Now, or can you see that immediately? No. And, but, and the problem, here's the other problem, the other problem is seventy-five percent of our runs are Medicare or Medicaid. That's, you get what you get. You can't bill the patient any extra, if they're on Medicare, you can't do that, it's illegal, you can't do it. So we get, we get a set amount, I don't have that figured permanent, it's, it's like Medicare on A L S rates like five hundred and something dollars, that's what you get.
More than the list, that's all the real pay period, regardless of what you do.
Our, currently our, currently our insurance rates right now, commercial insurance rates, currently right now, like a, like an A L S runs like thirteen hundred. So we can raise that to the, to the maximum amount required by all, just four hundred percent, we can do that. And we, and that's going to help us to bring in more money on the commercial side of stuff.
What's your current mileage rate?
Current mileage rate with commercial insurance is eighteen dollars. Uh, uh, Medicare and Medicaid pays eight dollars, so. Med, med, Medicare will pay it's like up to thirteen dollars for like first seventeen miles, I don't know how they come up with all this.
I know Crawford County charging fifty-seven dollars a mile.
Yeah, well, that's on commercial rate.
Right.
Yeah.
They don't get it, they, they only pay that, but you can charge all you want, I can charge you two million dollars, you're, we're going to get this, they can charge all you want. We are very.
But they are, they're, they're, they're worth like, they're worth like that four hundred percent, they're, they're at that maximum thing.
Right.
So it would go up, you know, but, uh, like I said, when I talked to the billing company, talked to ambulance board on Thursday. Uh, they made a motion to go ahead and go get an ordinance to put that into effect, uh, from the county commissioners, but, uh. They, they passed that, and, and hopefully we can get the ordinance drawn up. Once the ordinance is drawn up, I send it to the billing company, it goes into effect immediately, we don't have to, we don't have to wait. But that being, that will help some, uh, I mean, we normally bring in, you know. In this business is, is not, is not a moneymaker.
No, but it's also not sustainable, whatever you do. Would you agree with that?
No.
If you look at in ten years, this will be almost half of our budget.
No, I would not agree with that statement, because in twenty twenty-three, we brought in a little over one million. Last year, we brought in one point one five nine million. Uh, tax dollar wise, we'll just call it a loss if you keep running business and you can't run this like a business, you try managing your budget and everything. We only had three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar loss last year, we only took two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in tax dollars, we had a little bit left over for the year in the checkbook. This year, we're looking at maybe two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars loss with an income of, kind of raising it to one point two six eight million. If we get, if this raises in there for next year, we're probably going to be able to raise our income coming in about one point three five, one point four. So those numbers are actually getting less and less and what we're actually taking. Uh, if you want to go back and compare for twelve years ago, when it was Knox County U M S, and for four years they was giving them, they, four years they gave them a million dollars. And they wore out two and a half million dollars worth of equipment in those days' costs. If you go with inflation from ten years ago, when it was Knox County quadruple that, and that's what you would be paying for them here now. Uh, I think the service has come a long way, a long way in budget, budgetary, the service we provide, and the people we have. Quality care we give our constituents in this county, I think everything is on the up and up, so no, I don't disagree, I totally disagree with that statement, I think this. Ambulance service is going in the right direction, I honestly think if you had somebody come in from a private service, which I heard, somebody mentioned that, it's going to cost you a whole lot more. Ten years ago, when they kicked Knox County out, they had Switzerland County come down, and they probably gave you the most honest line item was nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars upfront, you supplied the equipment per year. And we'll give you what you're doing now, that was ten years ago. Ten years ago times four, they're probably going to ask for four of it. It's like Tony said, this is a nonprofit thing, it has to be tax paid, so we understand that, we, our budget is set on what's actually could happen. It's like Tony said, we beat the hell out of it, we beat our people up to write our reports right for our budgets, so our income is good. If you go to the front of your packet there, there's Golden County thing in there. That is probably the closest service to us to the state of Indiana, they make twenty-nine hundred runs a year. They have two trucks, they have two chase cars, they do an on-call, they have five trucks total to replace it, they do some other things. Their billing is only, they only bring in seven hundred thousand dollars. So those people ain't writing their reports right, although what they're doing, I ain't going to second guess it, because every ambulance service is different, but we're bringing in seven hundred thousand dollars more per year because we're on our people's ass. And I say every one of them, me and Tony, that's all most of the time, because we make them write their reports right, and we do what needs to be done, and they're doing an outstanding job. And I'm going to back every one of them back here to say thank you. They're, they're serving our taxpayers, they're taking care of our taxpayers, they're meeting the budget, we're doing what needs to be done, doing the best we can. And their budget at Golden County is two point seven eight million dollars, what they dealing with. That's all, two different websites, Tony.
We've been under, we've been under the budget for, for the last three years. I don't know what more we can ask for.
Had more people doing away with overtime and just with the system, with the U M S, emergency services, the whole, just Brandon alluded to, you kind of told so, or I thought, we just can't save that enough, it's impossible. It's emergency services, we're just saving as far as the U M S, perfect, please.
No way we, no way we can go with a twelve-hour shift.
We have, we have to double for our staff, and what do you solve?
Nothing. You're, you're right, you're actually spending more money than what we would be right now. And it's just, it's, it's, it's the, it's just the nature of the beast in this business, it's just, it's the way it goes, I mean, it's just, you know, we can't. You know, I mean, I, I'll give it, I mean, it, it, it is, you guys. Don't understand what we have to go through, even to hire somebody, I mean, it, it really short pulling teeth. Really putting somebody in, because it, it's just because of the fact that, you know, they go fire departments, I'm losing one to a fire department, actually, I already had. Uh, just in, it just in the last week. Uh, they're going to fire departments where the benefit package is so much better, the hourly rate is so much better. And, and I can't, I can't compete with that. I can't.
So one more question, can we, can we do away with the on-call? If you figured twenty-nine hundred runs a year, that's eight runs for that, is that my question? I'm asking, I'm just asking a question.
I, I understand that.
Can we, can we do it through mutual aid?
That's, that's, so let me. Mutual aid, mutual, mutual aid thing is your own problem is, is we, we have to count on that now sometimes. Only problem is, we, we can't really count on that. Uh, because when we call another county, a lot of times we'll get a no. Uh, Erickson County helps us out a lot, because most of the time during the day, they have five trucks on, most of the time, not always, but, uh, they do, but the problem with that, problem is relying on. Relying on mutual aid situation is if they get something in their county, that's where they're going to go, and then we're stuck with no money.
And that actually happened last night, they was actually on their way up here to make a run for us while I was responding to fly for our chase car. They had to break away because they called a run, and luckily, one of our employees come in, grabbed the truck, it come down, we was able to man, we had an influx of runs. Yes, we do depend on them, we, they do help us. I've actually got numbers in here somewhere, if you ever want to come up and ask, we actually got numbers on how many times a year we have them on standby. Uh, Brent's dispatch has actually done a four-month study on how many times we use, we use a lot, and we still use our on-call. Can we do away with on-call? No, I mean, it's not covered, it's not covered all the time, can you, I'm in there, again, breaking it on, hit on it, I don't want you guys to do you guys' job, I don't want to be in the license official. And yes, you guys are responsible for the purse strings as us taxpayers, but. Don't want to, we don't want to do away with on-call, got those trucks up, the rest of these names, or you need to, we need to.
I mean, I know, I know it's, I know a run volume is not the highest around the other county, I mean, Erickson County, they did like almost six thousand runs last year. But they got an interstate going through there, they do hospital transfers where we don't. Uh, so, so that, that, that all counts towards that, Scott County is very similar, I don't know what their actual run count was last year, but. But they're, they have three trucks on, the smallest county Scott is, they have three trucks on there today. And I've said that here for a long time, we actually need that, we actually need a third truck on. But, you know, there's times where ten trucks aren't enough, I mean, it really is, I mean, there's, there's times when that happens. But, you know, if we, we, years ago, we had a third truck that was on duty years ago, and that, that didn't, that didn't last very long. But, you know, it, it, we have to have, as far as on-call, that is our cheapest option for coverage. Additional coverage, that is our cheapest option. Uh, you know, the, the, the people that, I mean, on-call is not mandatory for the employees to take, it's not. Simply because of the fact that I've got people that live outside of this county, and, and there's no sense in undertaking an on-call position because it takes an hour to get here. You know, so it, that's, that's, that's kind of off the board, so, but we do have, we do have, we do have people that pick, pick them on-calls up, and, and like I said, a lot of times, a lot of times we have. A twelve-hour on-call, we have some on-call twelve hours, we have some people on sometimes for the whole twenty-four, very rarely, but most of the time it's kind of split up, so. But, I mean, as far as, as far as actually doing away with that, there's just basically, that would be a, that'd be a washout, we wouldn't be able to do that, because our coverage would be severely dropped.
There would be people waiting on the next ones, that's, that's a given, and how do you put it, Ryan?
All right, any other questions for, I heard Tony on the U M S, but.
I do, I do have a comment out of this circuit. I, uh, I kind of encouraged, uh, after this was brought up, a couple of budget hearings about the overtime. I certainly encouraged, uh, Councilman Armstrong to, to pursue this, uh, I kind of knew what it would end up, but, uh. As you said, Mr. Abbott, you know, we have to try, we have to look at these things, and I think these gentlemen here who run the ambulance service have proven that they, they have looked. We have to look at these things and I think these gentlemen here who run the ambulance service have proven that they, uh, they have looked into other options. And, uh, just to do the nature of the beast, I, I was in a similar si- situation many years ago when I first got on the council and people would, uh, well, they basically laughed at me because of, I was trying to apply my private sector logic to an ambulance service. And I want to remind the people in the audience, you know, Mr. Mr. Armstrong, uh, like, like many of us, there are a lot of things about an ambulance service that, uh, well, it, it truly is a different animal as is anything public safety, sheriff's department, jailers, fire. So, um, you, you can't blame us for trying at least looking at things and this is why we talk about things. But, uh, please show a little respect to our council here. Thank you. I, I understand. Thank you, Todd. Yeah, and, uh, I'd just like to say I want to commend these guys for, for trying. Uh, the, this overtime thing, uh, it's just part of the nature of public safety. Thank you, thank you for looking into this. Thank you for the information and, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
There was one other thing in your binder in the center and this is just information for you. It's ways that, as I get here, above the bring it up, you gotta bring it up in your budget hearings about this, uh, Senate Bill One. What a line of look. I thought, how is there ways to fund the EMS? Every law has something in there. Quit doing it. Look, I'm not going to say I'm a lawyer. I'm not, but I did find some things on what you can fund it. There are different ways. There's one here that's out twenty, unit twenty-three. All your law numbers are on there. There's a lit tax. There's one you can find and do it as a township pays for each of the runs. And someone made a comment, well, you don't know how many runs each township does. I said, well, yeah, we can do that. A mod of by the report and in that, in those, there's a page in there that shows you how many runs each township make, we make. It also tells you what the three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar loss technically we had last year, it's a hundred and twelve dollars per run that we actually lost. On that last page, it had a quick breakdown of the twenty, two thousand seven hundred seventy-one runs we did. And if you take that hundred and twelve dollars, you can see how much each township will be responsible for their park bill. That just gives you an idea. Like I said, I'm not a lawyer, don't know here, but there is options to be able to sustain that three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars we did make last year. There is ways out there that they have made this Senate Bill One to be able to support your annual service. Like I said, nobody turned on it. I just read it. Took, took a couple of days reading some of it, found this, printed it out and threw the report to us. You guys, for your information.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for the information. Appreciate it. We've talked about this before. Some of the safety is a little different.
We'll, we'll send up to you anytime and ask any questions. You want numbers, we got them. Just get those along without confusion.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Burman, here from the board. He had a request and he has a budget that he needed to look at, so.
Good morning.
My morning.
Uh, I've called the guy, that's the last buddy here. I should have been here, uh, a little bit to chat with him. Now I'm here this morning for Cynthia Rainbow. When we hired her, we was, she was on a second deputy pay. And the board and I have decided, if you guys approve, we'd like to move her to first deputy pay. Uh, as far as the budget, as far as the money in my budget, it's there. I don't have no more money. I could have nothing there to cover that, so. But then I'm gonna make this pretty easy. I'll be out here.
How much of an increase was that, um, do you remember?
Uh, mine for sure, for sure. I got some papers. I think it's an extra thousand, fifteen hundred dollars a year, something like that.
Have you seen an increase in income at the park?
Excuse me?
Have you seen an increase in, in income?
At the park, actually, we're down a little bit this year. We're still making money. Right now, we're at a hundred forty-one thousand to the good. Uh, that would go down, you know, in the next three months. Uh, we still plan on turning over a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's just due to like the whole county people not having people, you know, to do things. We've had to lock off from written cabin rentals for the week, just the weekends only, just technical personnel. I've hired one more, uh, say that lady's than what I've ever had before, a hundred and fourteen years. Also hired one more groundkeeper than what I have in fourteen years. And I've made the last money what I have in fourteen years, but we're still, uh, we're still doing good. Uh, like I said, we're at a hundred forty-one thousand, not pretty around a hundred thousand turn into you guys.
I can tell you that in the years, you know, since John took the park over, um, you know, the park for years operated at the red. He's done a phenomenal job of, uh, of turning that around, uh, to where the park is, uh, is as sufficient. A lot of that's just been done due to John's work there to keep things, you know, the way they need to be. And, uh, you know, that's required a little more work from that, that's the position. A few more things on her, some meetings, uh, different things that she has to attend to, to catch up to.
I already showed Cindy at first deputy pay.
Excuse me?
I already showed Cindy at first deputy pay.
You are sure of that?
Mm-hmm.
And when did that happen?
It's like last year.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four. Did actually, she came in as the first deputy.
Well, when me and you first talked, when I first come aboard here, these people were very, very underpaid down there. And we put Cindy at the second deputy. We put my full-time employees, just like the highway department. And since that time, things has changed and I get living on the ice hills and I took, like, the highway department. And a lot of things are different. Uh, whether her pay should be the same, but it's not. You know, like I said, if we can make, I can make you a million a year. It's employee problems. It's exactly what it is. But we still turn them in a year.
I'm just saying she is currently at par city.
So it's eighteen, eighty-nine, is that right right now, Alan? Would Malia be on, uh, first deputy pay because her and Malia's pay is exactly the same? Do we know what second deputy pay is, the difference between a first deputy pay?
Second deputy is, yes, a second. Eight hundred fifty-two dollars.
Eight hundred fifty-two? Well, she's a first deputy pay at the office, isn't she?
Well, I mean, she is if you wanted to talk about, if you wanted to talk about increasing her more, that's fine, but I just want them to, she is currently at par city.
Well, the only thing I'm saying here is, you know, when you wind the clock, you get more money. When you come to this meeting to be the secretary, you get more money. You know, Cindy wore a lot of different hats. Just like when you take a person here that works for a shift, all month of July, she works second. When we do our Harper board meetings, she's the one that writes the minutes of the meetings. I believe she'd be, be paying more money than thirty-seven thousand in there. I think that needs to be more around forty. That would be just as close as everybody downstairs here. Just the jobs we're out there don't mean, we don't need to be, you know, the same.
Her salary comes out here, but.
Excuse me?
Her salary is going to be coming out of here, but.
Yes. Yeah, I think she's in there right now for, what was she on, thirty-seven, thirty-eight? Then the gatehouse pays at forty thousand.
She was gatehouse at forty-five.
We'll have plenty of money left over on the gatehouse pay to increase her salary.
She's a secretary, don't she? It shows her thirty-nine.
My goalkeeper.
It shows her thirty-nine, two sixty-eight is where it shows her right now.
She has that right now?
Mm-hmm.
I have got that figure. I'm sorry.
I'm just telling you the number last season, but.
You got thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine, two sixty-eight, so it says.
First India.
Our secretary says for first deputy, correct? That would be first deputy.
And with the rate.
Why is she only thirty-seven?
Okay, you have to do that one because it's in the salary. The one that says thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Yeah. Is there a date on that or what's the date on the meeting? Uh, did you aim twenty-five?
Well, when you adopted the budget last year, yeah. And with the four percent increase you're giving them, it would be forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight, per okay.
Forty thousand, eight thirty-eight. Or the twenty-sixth of the budget. That's what's the proof.
Yeah, that's.
With the proof of the budget. Thank you. That's with the four percent, then you do.
I agree with that.
And you can, and you can come back later on.
We'll get, yeah.
You can come back later on. We can, we'll do a walk later. She's got a race coming. I just want to make sure she's on first.
Sure, okay. I was here to do what they have.
Check and make sure that I, I think from what we're seeing there, it's the same. And just to reiterate, um, John, the budget hasn't increased since twenty-three. As I asked for any extra, so, uh, this budget is staying pretty much on the same.
Pretty much staying the same as, oh, the time I've been there.
Right. We've got, we'll check into that, take that under advisement. Maybe adjust or something you think. We need to read that. We'll double check. I'm not sure she's up too bad.
I just want to get her up around forty and I'll be happy.
Uh, with, with the, uh, with the four percent, that could put her up forty thousand, eight thirty-eight. You know, fill that in.
I want to be a little investigative on salary.
Please do because, I mean, you guys got one number. I've got a rider and.
I mean, and you can double check back.
Yeah, I need to double check. I, John, I've been here, uh, just been here. I made a mistake.
Right. We'll check into that then for you. Let you know if there's any questions. I'll give a little bit from there.
All right, all right. Y'all, your time.
Thank you, Joe. I appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right. Any other budget discussion that we need to, uh, to discuss, we have until October fifth, I believe, instead of, yeah. October fifth is our deadline to submit to extend the twenty-sixth budget. So we've got a little work to do, um, between now and then. So that would be some, some things that, that we need to, uh, to discuss. Just so you know, we may, you know, there may have been maybe or two, uh, to get this itemized, but these are some things that we need to, uh, we need to take a look at for sure. Any other comments, questions?
I'd just like to thank all the employees. I appreciate it. And everyone, I do so. Thanks for the partnership.
There is a, uh, handout, I was passing out that gets an additional bid for mowing, fairgrounds. That'll be the third one.
Can you say this is the third?
Yes. Was reading, I think, on the former vehicle, uh, is there anything on, we can do progress there?
Just the research that I've done, there's very, we're very limited on used eight-foot beds. That really brought my access to used beds. They're all short. They're all short. Well, not all, but a little few out there. I found one in Tennessee that I made a call on. It didn't work out. It was a regular cab, four-wheel drive, uh, eight-foot bed. It showed some potential as you look at it. It didn't work out. Yeah, we're still working on that. I've got two of you guys. I know we've got some time yet, but appreciate you asking that. One thing that I might say. I try to address it as good as I can. I'm not really great at public, um, but all you people, we all appreciate you guys. The fact that we try to say the taxpayer money should not be looked at as a negative from you folks, please. Because you guys are all taxpayers too. We have to try to come up with a necessary funds that allows you to do the most efficient job. So I would encourage you to, first of all, break for us, but I encourage you, no one knows how to do your job any better than you. Any more efficient than you. We don't know. We're, we're asked to come in once, three or four times a month, sit, couple, three or four of our meetings and make decisions that affect your livelihood. Now, put your place in our position. That's a tough, that's a tough scenario to do. And we try to base our decisions on good information from you folks. I would encourage all of you, as you do your job. I would encourage all of you, as you do your jobs, do it in the most efficient way. If you see something that could save the taxpayer, you money, and you guys see it more than we would ever see it, take it to your department. And if you don't get positive results, then you can come see us. But I'm encouraging all of you people to have a mindset that we have here. Because we appreciate all of you guys. We, I, I couldn't do any of your jobs. I know you're going to make it. I don't think, we all know that. But you have chose and you have made a commitment to do that job. So, it's a personal thing, that's why. So, look inside yourself, and if you can do a better job, more efficiently, please lay your heads on it. That's all. So, thank you for what you did.
Earl spoke, thank you. Any other questions, comments on the budget discussion at this time? I assume we've got some work to do, so we'll wait. We'll keep hanging on here. Yeah, just to reiterate, we're all in the same boat. And we've all got jobs to do, so we will definitely don't want anyone to think that anything that's commented or said doesn't go under the guidance, because it does. As Counselor Flynn mentioned, we, we've all got a job to do and trying to, trying to do it the most efficient as we can. Keeping in mind that we need to take care of our own employee retention is a big thing. And we do appreciate all of you. We have a job, we need for the taxpayer to do that, so we'll, we'll continue to work on that, work on the budget as needed be. As I mentioned, we've got until the fifth of October, so. Little other discussion on that, then we'll move forward here. More comments and concerns? Start to depress, got anything else? Tom?
No, I'd just like to say that I wasn't trying to personally attack anyone, EMS, you know, sheriff's department, anything like that. All I do is look at the numbers and see things that stand out, and the overtime was the biggest thing that stood out. I'm just trying to save money for taxpayers. I'm not trying to take money away from you. I think you're underpaid as EMS workers. I don't think your rates is high than it needs to be. But I think the overtime is higher than it needs to be. So, I was just trying to find a balance is what I'm trying to do and figure out a way to do that. So, it would, it's not personal. Like I said, I'm looking out for everyone in this county. It's all I'm trying to do. It's all our mother. It's all. When anything personal.
Hey, there. Mr. Hill. Chairman. Anything else? Commissioners?
Thank you guys for your services.
So, I'm good, thank you. Thank you everyone. Okay. Commissioners, motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Good. Motion to adjourn. I'm ready. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chell. Second, I'm Mr. Dave. I'll look to say the right. Meeting closed. Thank you, all.